Free.
Okay. Like, well, you know. These things will play out. What do you need?
Because I have been safe. And. I want to. I. In your school.
Local.
That's there.
Here. Here. Here.
Rudy.
Here.
Okay.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to excuse the commissioner meeting.
I may get. Is there a second? It's for.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close of vote. Thank you. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by through the non-constitutive items together. Can be dealt with by sufficient motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may request that any item or items on the consent agenda be removed at place. As the last item on a due diligence. Full discussion. Such requests to be automatically respected. We have item A approved the June thirteenth twenty twenty-three regular meeting that is presented. And item B approved the request from Fire Chief Dennis Amesbury and Longton Point City Fire Department. Working city staff will apply for the Michigan Fire Equipment Grant for approximately seventy-seven hundred dollars to upgrade thermal energy camp. Anyone in the audience have a question or if you'd like any of these items moved? Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
I entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda.
I made a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Consider it accepted. There. We'll call Jessica.
That's there.
Hi.
Numanjia.
Hi.
Crawford.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
What's that?
Thank you. Uh, now we would have citizens' comments on non-adjunct items, so any member of the public would like to address the city commission. And approach the podium. Have five minutes and please just state your name and add your interest. Okay. Moving on. We have correspondence. Uh, there is a twenty twenty-two waterfall report for the city of Old City. Consumers Energy public notice. And an email from Chad Polkowski dated June twentieth regarding the family fair. Issues, any comments or questions? And of course, on this. Okay. Moving on, city manager report.
Uh, a few items for this morning or afternoon. Yes. Uh, we held our, uh, the first half of our first community exchange in several years. Uh, the city of Sioux State, Rio Grande, uh, go today. All seem to have gone very well. Uh, the nine reps are dead, but that community they came down to visit with us, uh, which has to be three times our size. Love very impressed with all the points that he does and has to offer. Uh, I had talked to everyone, uh, involved, uh, on this end who made it such a wonderful experience. Uh, we'll have the afternoon committee to see all that they got to offer with our visit to their community, which is scheduled for Wednesday, August ninth. And I was really glad that we got a nice clear sunny day than, uh, the slow weather we had today. Uh, we're, uh, experiencing the relative calm before the storm, which will take place, uh, uh, one week from today. When wine celebrates the Fourth of July and its usual brand way. Things at this point can be coming very well for that event and the point that will be following just a couple of days later. It will be an exhausting week, uh, but I'm sure with the help of, uh, many people, wine will be a test of both bets. Preliminary work has been done on the main electric gate installation at the airport approved by the city commission a few meetings ago. The contractor hoped they had it operational by the middle of July. We met with the contractor for the grant funded with a pavilion P A system, uh, on site there at the pavilion, uh, yesterday. And he intends to pay some materials bribing for that project in about three weeks. Uh, that number informed that the Spark grant application for the skating park, uh, was submitted, uh, yesterday afternoon. And we'll keep you posted as we hear more regards to that. After our last meeting, the state legislature took no significant further action, at least for now. Uh, efforts in managing the hassle legislation that will remove almost all of local governments, whether it's cities, villages, townships, or counties. Uh, with their ability to regulate, uh, where gravel lines go or how they can be, uh, built. Uh, we'll keep an eye on this, uh, and act, uh, when the timing seems most appropriate. And you may have noticed, but it's not quite, uh, Christmas in July yet, but our downtown public lighting contractor is in the downtown. Working on getting lights ready in the trees for next winter. Uh, those are the items I have at this point. We should ask a question on these, all right? I'd be glad to try to address.
Okay. Any questions for commissioners? If, if, if I could, I would call.
No, I was just gonna say, you like, we, we talked a lot about, you know, Microsoft dating on the, um, P A system, um, for pavilion. But we talked a lot of the last meeting about, you know, how, how this thing was going to be, uh, you know, protected and who's gonna have, you know, the ability to use it and everything. I didn't get any word back, uh, you know, keeping this thing safe.
Yeah, that was one of the subjects we talked specifically with the contractor about, uh, the kind of, there'll be four speakers mounted on the interior. And he says these are pretty much bulletproof and he'll make sure that the mounting structures are such that they should be able to withstand any vandalism. Is what his, uh, comments were. Uh, the main component will gain a lot of room, uh, in the back of the building where our mechanicals are. Uh, people that have access for events will have, uh, a key to get into that room so they can turn it on or off. Uh, there will also be a remote, uh, like speaker control or volume control. We're gonna put that in the front closet there where we keep the extra chairs and things right off the game room. That room stays locked as well as moving unless somebody has a reserved and has, uh, the key to go into that. The microphone will be wireless. Uh, we haven't figured out exactly how we're gonna do that. We'll probably keep that here until somebody checks it out and uses it as a part of reservation. So those are the preliminary plans. We tried to go over that all with someone who was here yesterday. Uh, this, this is the first time I met a representative in this firm. Apparently he does work all over Northern Michigan, up on Mackinac Island, the Grand Hotel, and all places, last school, this, this round. He seemed to really know his stuff, uh, so I thought I left the meeting really, uh, very uncomfortable. That's the guy with, with me after meeting as well to be my next number of comments.
No, I didn't. Very wrong. Perfect. Um. When is everyone, or being up under this comment, I'm delighted to check that. No, nobody's seen. Okay. If I could, two hundred of city managers report, I'd like to, I'd receive a letter. An email letter Friday that, uh, I'd like to read. It's from the Government Finance Officers Association. Uh, we are pleased to notify you that your annual conference and financial report for the fiscal year ended April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. All of the ties from the G F O A certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition, recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents significant accomplishment by government and its management. We hope that you will arrange for a formal presentation of your certificate and award financial reporting achievement. And give appropriate publicity to this notable achievement. We hope that your example will encourage other government officials in their efforts to achieve and maintain an appropriate standard of excellence in financial reporting. Sincerely, Michelle Martin, being director of technical service. So. Congratulations to Sam. I, I believe this is upset here in the city, correct?
Yes.
So Jessica, head off to you and Sam. Thank you. We have a report of the officers, board, and screening committees included in the agenda packet. Uh, with the major twenty twenty-three financial statement. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on. We have old business. Leadership Charlotte Boy County Trail Connection Route Signing Approval. Consider approving the Trail Connection Route Signing Proposal from Leadership Charlotte Boy Counties. And authorize them to proceed with its installation as recommended by the Boeing City Park and Recreation Commission and Stat.
Um, my name is Mary. I, I am here as, um, leadership Charlotte Boy county twenty-three. I'm kind of happy that I'm here as well. Um, we are working on the one to be connected by route that will connect to the Long Valley Railway to be going to Charlotte Boy Railway. We were here a month ago, um, getting the route approvals. And now we're going to put signing on that route. We've put together a roadmap that is provided, um, to the board here to look at where our custom for standard training and custom sign and replace all the other routes. And we are just seeking approval to, um, we've already worked with our track on this and want approval we can have, but wanted your approval to continue murdering them and by collecting. Um, where the sign thing that would be and the cost divided. So there is information in the packet that details the route and then also has, um, finalized, mostly finalized sign examples in the packet. Um, right, and over there, even ones who walk or anyone who's objective, or maybe you guys, um, would you guys be able to collaborate with? Not. We finally have a reason to sign it even more.
Okay, Mike, is there anything you'd like to add?
I think you covered it, uh, pretty well. We've had multiple meetings with the group, uh, those meetings have involved, uh, planning director, our police chief, and our local recently Doug Arney. And he's become a leader with the project as well too. So we're very appreciative of all the results they've done. Uh, they've found a reasonable amount of money to put this project together. And they come up with some very, uh, I, we believe, uh, good sign designs that are consistent with, uh, some that we already have, uh, near the airport on a trail of Boeing Valley tracks. So, uh, and again, and you can speak also to the, that this has been discussed by the Park and Recreation Commission and they were just spoilers.
Yeah, as a representative on Park and Recreation, uh, this was in, I believe there's another member here, Pete Preeger. He doesn't, yeah, Pete, but this was presented in record, being fully endorsed this stuff. You know, he's about a break, um. And there was, we, we, we wanted to make sure that there was some media confusion, whether or not it's necessary to bring this back to the city commission because the routing order has been approved. But we thought our people, there's a huge opportunity to renew it. And in North, you know. Is there any, uh, other comment from the public or questions? And is there anything you'd like to, um?
I just, that I incur for what's been said already, I'm really excited to make this, making it two by two paths and. What we used to say is rough through town and the signage is the final step to make that transition from nothing to complete the path with proper signage.
Anyone else, anyone else in the leadership Charlotte Boy? We have five representatives here for bill representatives from leadership Charlotte Boy and the United Michigan Trails Council. Okay, we can move the commission deliberation. Mark.
Yeah, and, uh, we did talk about the path of the trailway. Um, and you have your path at all. Uh, the science looks spectacular. It took, took a lot of time on that. Uh, I love that part. What I don't like is, uh, we, uh, we seem to be acclaimed for being a tree city and, and I don't want to be a science city. So I, I, I think, I don't, I don't understand why we need two signs, um, not even a block away. Um, and, uh, I, I, I know, I know you guys are making a turn there. So I understand that as you're coming along, but I, I guess I just wouldn't want to see, you know, two signs as classy as they are. Just, you know, being.
Which ones are every?
Be so close, the one right at the corner of Veterans Park and then the one right at the corner of River Street. So it's basically highlighted in here. The Veterans Park trailhead and then the, uh, uh. There's a line here. This is. So here's one and then here's the other showing you to make a turn. So I understand that. I don't understand why we can't have all the information that's, uh, here, here. And then, you know, just very well. I mean.
Okay, so the sign and, um, River and Lake Street.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, we could, we could be open to removing that if we needed to, but just standard sign there to go ahead. I have one, um, in advantage and to provide way of finding.
I mean, they're, they're definitely are classic signs, but I just, uh, you know, again, that's, that's my piece of setup. I just want to see, um, two of them so close together and, and basically sort of.
Can you provide an example of what those two signs illustrate? Would you need an example? This is.
How would that relate to the one?
Or it is, yeah, like, what would we visually be looking at on those two signs?
It would just be this. I don't think that, but it would be the standard ring on the height.
My. Here.
It mainly, it may give, give you a rationale to go along with that. Other like, oh, that would, that was true. So that would be a perfect thing we have to tell them that. The bike route would be even this side. So it was way behind the wheel.
And, and again, they're very classy, but also, you know, so almost, um, well, they're all six foot and then, you know, actual wide. So we figure, shoot a wide one standard right there. I mean, you can see it's your part of the, uh.
You can work. Go ahead.
No, actually, I would agree with you in, in my, it's pretty much sign pollution, um, and this, so a lot of people say giving directions on that one, but the suggestion.
Uh, I think they're good looking signs. I appreciate you guys getting this out with a wood shop. Are you guys actually utilizing the wood shop? That's, that's good approval. Awesome. Is there an ETA on when the signage project would be itself completed?
Um, as soon as we can get a proposed order of the custom signage and that would be about three, maybe three or four weeks around. And I have to replace the order that finally designs the part and back and then order it. Um, could be around there. I would say, I think we did at least by late mid-August, I think. We're gonna save that for then. And then we, we work with the city of One City to install the standard sign and then work with the wood shop and in time, um. We need to install the actual. Up inside the distributor. A little bit later than we wanted, but we thought if we could, we'll get the custom, the standard signs factors, we can have you start to get those up. And then once, we're gonna do two phases. Then one of the, the custom signs, we'll get those, those installed and then, um, fabric of the kinds there.
All right, okay. Nice though. Is the suggestion to eliminate the sign on river?
We could, um, that sign was one, we had a few signs and we had, um, we had donors that ordered around there. And there's not, and we don't have, um, we didn't get donations before, we just have very many that cover it. But that is one I don't, if we feel that would be okay, to eliminate that one. And at least have our, the trailhead signs, there's a lot of parking there where people can go on the trail and go off to get a Charlotte boy or, um, going, going along if they want to. Could have been a little bit done.
Well, I, I would support that then, um. So. Do you have any question?
Just one question, I guess. Does anybody have any idea when the trail will be finished? News on that?
Or was it, when the, uh, Charlotte County Trail will be completed? I'm, uh, bet you for the competition. Okay, we'll come back to the idea.
What I know right now is that phase three, which takes the trail to Port Bay is out for a bit. Um, I think the earliest study could be constructed would be this fall, but I haven't heard any feedback. So I don't know. You've had that updated or not? No, okay. So that would be, but that is the next phase that we'll be at, uh, in the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion then to approve the recommendation by the, uh, River Street. Um, ways for the sun, you just have a direction by River.
I'll give a motion that city commissioner, if you don't consider the Trail Connection Route Signing Proposal from Leadership Charlotte County and authorize it to proceed with its installation. As proposed, the modification brought forth by Commissioner Ruby and recommend points to these park and recreation. Commission as staff. Are they helping you and so?
No, it doesn't need anything. That, that recommendation is coming from that direction.
Okay.
Just one point clarification. So you would want to, you, you would just want a directional, River Street, you wouldn't want a big sign over to River Street.
I don't think there would be room, I don't know. We, we, we want to leave that sign by parking, so people want to use it as a, a trailhead.
Got it. Perfect. Yeah, so we need to stand. So what's the example of that sign that's going?
Which one?
The one that, or the project would be this one?
Yeah, this, yes. No, the street.
That's the Vegas Park, right? That's, yeah, page sixty-one, right?
Yeah.
This is the one that we're on Sunday.
Yeah, and what?
This is the one that we're on.
What page number?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Okay, I mean.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? It's time to, Jessica, you'll call this?
Crawford.
I'm.
Rudy.
Hi.
Baxter.
Hi.
Nunchak.
Hi.
Thank you. And thank you to leadership Charlotte Boy. We very.
Yeah.
Thank you, bud. Beautiful design. And thank you, we're.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Underneath this, the ninety-eight Arena Engineering proposal. Consider a recommendation from city manager Michael P. to approve the June seventh, twenty twenty-three proposal for consulting through from Evan Marsh. The estimated maximum fee of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Subject to the provision that at any point the project becomes untenable, the city reserves a right to work with Evan Marsh. Modify the agreement or failing that term, paying Evan Marsh for services rendered to that. Mike.
And then reported earlier on May nineteenth of this year, the Mission Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy Eagle. Approved modified permit for improvements to the Boeing's evidence for region arena. That align with the city commissions previously approved Concept Three overall development plan. A copy of Eagle's communication on that matter will be included in the agenda packet that's available for commissioners and allies. Concept Three is well written, reflected in Evan's chief label six to twelve, Eagle communication, I'll write that off a little bit. On June first, the U S Army Corps of Engineers followed through to initiate their modified permit for the same plan. I didn't include that document in this package because it's pretty much duplicate based, whether it's the pad or the key. But a copy of that communication is available here at city hall, uh, or on the city website. After, uh, receipt of the modified permits, our consultant Evan Marsh was, uh, contacted to develop a proposal for, uh, work they would. Need to undertake to transform the approved concept of the modified permit. Into actual, uh, first step of improvements expressed by the city commission for development, which is the replacement of D dot, uh, within the existing weight of tenement. Attached to this proposal from Adam Mark that's dated June seventh, uh, for that work. Uh, subsequent to that proposal, uh, we had further discussions with the Division Department of Natural Resources. Uh, Waterways Command Committee with regards to our ability to move forward and, uh, with the use of, uh, the two existing grants that the city has been awarded by them. That discussion was very positive and indicated that, uh, to the extent that our revised project aligns with the grants. That were previously approved, those funds should still be available for our use. That discussion, uh, was further documented in the, uh, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three grant memorandum from Evan Marsh. Uh, that had been submitted to the Waterway Grant. Uh, that had been submitted to the Waterway Grant Handler for review in comics, uh, but remains in the draft form until, uh, there we. Since their review from that memo is still underway. The commission may recall that the budget arena for this year was developed assuming that no grant fund would be available for D-DOT replacement and related improvements. As noted in the June twenty-first memo, uh, these two grants were for two hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. And three hundred and twenty-seven, three hundred and eighteen dollars as they were awarded from, uh, the state. Exactly how much of that will be available for our use is still being determined. As noted above, the commission has expressed a desire to have a replacement, uh, to D-DOT in operation for the next voting season. Conversation with contractors and our consultant up to this point ever indicated that this still remains possible. Whether that timeline can be accomplished and what the actual cost will be remain unknown until actual bids are received. But for bids to be received and for us to remain grant eligible, proper specifications must go out, then be returned and analyzed. That is what the proposal from Evan Marsh needs to do. The cost per the services are broken down on page seven of their June seventh letter. Uh, the total proposed fee as outlined in that letter is for a hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And that significantly exceeds the ninety thousand dollars that is currently included in this year's budget for the engineering component of this project. As noted above, the Marina budget as approved does not include any grant funds for the Marina. Those bonds, if they become available, could be used to offset, uh, offset and pre-up monies in other areas. As the project plans and processments and, um, revenue sources firm up, updated financial projections would be added to the city commission. If at any point the project becomes untenable, we should reserve the right to work with. Evan Marsh to modify the agreement or failing that terminated, uh, but paying Evan Marsh for any services that they render to that point. That's my recommendation that the city commission review and consider the June seventh proposal for consulting services from Evan Marsh. And approve it for the estimated maximum fee of a hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Subject to the provision, as has been mentioned a couple of times now, that at any point the project becomes untenable, that we reserve the rights to work with Evan Marsh on the modified agreement. Or failing that terminated, paying them for those services rendered to that point. Uh, we do have Mike Morphy from Evan Marsh that's with us here today. And be glad to answer any questions for now, or as our discussion moves forward.
Mike, is there anything you'd like to add? Will you be able to provide?
Would be better than everyone.
Here again, please.
To add, uh, to what City Engineer's been over, um, proposal we provided on June seventh, maybe the assumption that we're going to utilize. As many of the grants as possible, maximize that they use. And then they have great managing funds, and that's how we funded it for the project. The memo that I provided later is in draft format, as David noted. Is meant to give you kind of two different options, that one would maximize useful grant dollars. The other one would do try to minimize the global share of the project, so just to provide that little numbers to you and how that shakes out. If you decided that, hey, we want, want to minimize the global share of this next phase. Then Evan Marsh's level of change to, or about the same percentage as the project, so just wanted to mention that. But I really think that, you know, you have these two grant, uh, awards on the table, and it should try to use as much of it as possible. Uh, whatever I remember, so I would be down with that, you all, you know. Here to answer any questions.
Right. Uh, we move to. I will comment, uh, this agenda, anyone interested in? Okay. Is there any address and, uh, there's a five, but when? Be very grateful when I, I said this before, you guys did a great job, the commission will step forward. And if a project that will feel controversial, I'm going to sit, people form, people are against it. Your concept here seems to be a great answer for all these groups. Kind of blended something that every living people live with. I've asked before, you're there, I mean, it's a lot of money, but keep going in the process, keep working, keep going on our, all the time. Thank you.
I'm Sandy Richard five three six, please, one three. I, um, I understand the need to move as fast as we can. But we're sitting here with a huge move being discussed that newly. With the least amount of activity for most citizens participating. Um, first off, we talked about the optimism for the D- construction by next summer. Um, I think that's extremely optimistic, given all that has to take place. Eagle permit is contingent on, um, observing if you move the item back specifically, there are very limited windows. Then you can actually do work in the water, and I recognize that there's a paramount of reconstruction that could be done. Um, outside of those windows, but it's basically from the time guys goes off, prime season, closes in prime season. Opens back up for a few more weeks until fall and respond. So just one aspect, let alone all the rest that needs to be done. Um, projected revenues and the ability to support. Even this, um, you have a budget and that you put in place for, um, a million four, um. But there isn't anything in there for the long term, maybe it's an operation, and you've heard that from us for a very long time. And you go back into the archives. The reason operations, we have the dock systems is. If you make this game. Every time we put in something new and it involves aggressive monitoring, their words, especially during cold snaps. Having to go and adjust the docks, inspecting the docks, and, and the docks after every major event and in the spring and fall. And in general, having a budget to look, to replace. Because we are in this position because we didn't budget for the moral hall. So there's that piece that's missing, the grants. You know, the, the lovely system kind of, and I understand that it's technically free money. But that shouldn't be the driver of all the review at all. And it needs to be what makes sense for the community, and we don't know what we're going to actually get. Didn't pray that, and in looking at. Uh. The fees, and of course, we're talking about a hundred ninety-eight-five right now for this contract. And it has, uh, quite a few exclusions. So to me, their piece, my piece is one. But there is the ability to activate all of the other exclusions, I would think. Um. That are not in cover, because there are a lot of the things we can anticipate. Um. Moving the still asset oil, uh, permits from other, uh, agencies. I would like to debate some of the information that was given to Eagle, but I'm not going to do that here. We're talking about the meeting. For phase two, if it all goes. I don't understand, maybe you can explain the top graphic surveys that shows the entire, uh, letter department. Maybe someone can explain to me why that is, um, in the city's own record, you show that, that, uh, there's a significant portion of that that is well in the, in the car station. There are any workings excluded, that can be very, very expensive. Uh, the letter will be subcontracted, um, and I kind of understand that, um, but I don't in, to a certain extent. It sounds as though the floating dock acreage design has not been settled, um, and that's critical. Not sure how Eagle could, due to permit, I know that there were design concepts in there. Of the permit without, um, having that be nailed down.
Kind of out there.
Okay. And again, the money, um. At the end of the day, our ability to pay for it, and I guess the. It's intended for me that it's going to be negotiated, so I wouldn't be bothering us about, thank you.
Thank you. So. The interest in raising the question that maybe we could go through a deal now. Um, why am you, like, I mean, you know, certain, uh, information with that?
Just to get to the commission, that is early sour, I mean, the commission wanted, of course, all this to go further, even fine. But again, as was mentioned at their, I said, our comments, that we're on a very tight timeframe. And the commission wanted to move this forward as quickly as possible, so that why it's here, if the commission is not comfortable with this meeting. Hi, again, we had a discussion today, I wish, put the discussion into another meeting.
Just to let you know, and speak up if you're, you know, is there anything at risk by talking this to a next meeting on the road, I'd be. Or your, when you, when you explore those risks?
Sure, it's, it's just timing, so, uh, just the overall project's schedule. Get into your design, get our local permits. And then, uh, the next step is going to be get to that a bit. You really need to, for a project like this, you need to allow three to four weeks minimum, four weeks is probably the optimum. Um, and then the key date here is going to be the fabrication of docks. A lot of that happens in winter, so selecting a contractor, being fabrication, getting a spot in that fabrication schedule. For the winter is really the first critical area, and then getting in the water prior to voting season, the next critical. So waiting another, you know, couple of weeks for another meeting, I don't think that fills it, but, you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's tighter than most of life.
Uh, another point about the dredging in the total map.
Yes, so, yeah, sure, sure. Uh, the dredging.
I guess, is there any question, but again, I'm at the mic, so get, get, I mean, as well, people out, we definitely hear things to ask. Sure.
Well, so we're very dredging, the, the project's design intention for instead of way to the river area as much as possible. I decided where it looks for down above, or maybe she found above two, two and a half feet, or still four feet above all time long, uh, water level. But even most shallow parts of the design, uh, were designed around the water to avoid dredging, so. Even the old extensions of the north not to be now, uh, that would move away from the shore of the river dredge, so. There could be deposition of seven, yes, over time is a concern, but this project, I don't sustain any dredge. The question, what was the other one, survey, so we have a survey school that picks up. Multiple veterans' park, you get rid of your outing, new, uh, water spirits through the park. And then, um, we're going to be doing some work forward as well for the land side. Um, we could potentially minimize some of that survey, be happy to take what, try to let down the. Let's survey information, or if the city already has a survey, um, that reflects the available condition. Of the, for this veteran's park, that, um, it just, it's a, it's a small piece of the design that, uh. Tell them we should pick it up and have the most today, the information for a start.
And then the grants, uh, are, what we're missing is the made life seventy grand, more meaningful waterway, commission roots, and, you know, those.
Sure, well, it's, it's really no different than the rate tremendous that you have now, I think there's a. We didn't see any, any environment, um, granted, uh, have been previously received, so you have a commitment to, uh, provide some transient slip. For the harvest system, state of Michigan. Um, I haven't been particularly involved in that, but the city in the, into the NR workspace, but. You know, you can say, have, open communication, I think. There's a possibility on the state of all, we, we, if they need to. We need up our seasonal numbers, maybe things were particularly, over in here in that case. Um, and as far as the two grants that are, that are pending. Um, the timeline I know is, you know, is coming up. The first grant, uh, it's outlined in the draft, not that quite, but the first grant, I think, needs to be spent as of now, which is four, it'll be right. And the other grant is another year later, and talking B and R, once they accept the city's plan to use these dollars. That can be kind of tied to the other, and the date to use it is, I think, twenty twenty-five, so. Little bit of time is available on those grants and flexibility as part of the scope of the use of that money. Uh, the other timeline is two permits. Eagle permit expires in May next year. When that expires, it has to be, as a life earning permit, it can't extend it. So that takes time, as you know, it takes a lot, or I would think you would just re-spend the same permit. Maybe it's that easy, but, uh, there's no guarantee. What's the cost of having to re-commit, or just give us a ballpark here, once it expires in twenty twenty-four, what that. To block here, sure, to, to re-spend the information, it's fairly simple, say, a thousand, two thousand dollars. There's probably a permit fee that's going to go to that, that may be two thousand dollars, maybe it would be a, you know, visual permit. Um. And hopefully it's fairly smooth, because it was just determined that it's active. However, there could be things that come up, that may drag that process out, and that's where, that's where the potential for a lot of work. Uh, if there's new concerns about muscle, or if there's a new concern about fisheries, or whatever else might come on, um, that can be developed.
I think also the questions that runs down, so, uh, is there any? Or, I didn't. Yeah, I'm not sure Mike has the answer to that right now, we, we're certainly going to get to that. Um, anyone else, um, in the bubble comment, I'm just agenda.
One, oh, one other thing, uh, that, I'm, I could. The fishman knows, uh, there was, uh. The work that could need to be done in water is fairly minimal, and oftentimes, if necessary, if that becomes an issue. We can talk with Eagle about forgiving that restricted things. For instance, when new dock arrived, they're going to do, brought it on a trailer, they're going to lift it, float it, and then brought it over to their anchors and connected. That doesn't do much to disturb the fishery, uh, except for a very localized area, so there's a potential there that that makes some of that, that Eagle, for, uh, just want to mention.
Uh, those are three by horse way, and like, Pete, I would applaud that mission for, uh, the work that they've been doing, that they've done in the past, and have, we've gotten to this point. Uh, hopefully we continue forward. I would, um, however, also comment that we always talk about the concept three that was, you know, that was, uh. Recognized as the direction that we're going to go, and, uh, I think they're going to support that idea. But I think there's still a lot of work kind of in, in kind of the back, that even though we're going to be looking at. Dock D and the improvements there, and hopefully try and get that done before, uh, the next voting season, there's still some other. Work that needs to be done, and so that once that D-DOT is completed, we're not backing up, and we're ready to go again. And so, and specifically, I'm talking about, uh, you know, occupancy data, you know, and hearing that it's not. Quite as accurate as we might like, but we need to figure out how we're able to use the data that we have. In some way, to be able to move forward, to be able to come up with the size Marina that one, and I don't have a figure. But in the size of Marina, that will generate revenue, just for, uh, the type of costs. That are associated with both running Marina personnel, um, maintenance and upkeep. And then also being able to, uh, maintain some sort of fund balance over the years to have the money to go replace it sometime on in the future. So we're not back doing this again. Uh, and I, I would hold that somewhere somehow, that's the, it's kind of back there, somebody's working on. And I, I would hold that somewhere somehow, that's the, it's kind of back there, somebody's working on it. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, root group, and one sixty one. I just want to kind of, yeah, taking the handout again, two weeks, there may be more people than meetings tonight, but. There's people that came to this meeting specifically because of this agenda. Uh, meeting was noted, just that it should be properly, that there's one interest with anyone to come to a meeting. They should come to a meeting, these are alternated, they're all beset, everything, uh, everybody knows when. Two weeks, giving it that way again, why somebody else is here? And they wanna delay it again, it's somebody else can do that, that it just doesn't seem right to those of us that are in there trying to attend, meeting rooms. Go forward, go forward, yes, thank you all so much for coming. Needs the ease, um, no more. Please move forward. I'm embarrassed, that we're still here, looking at the same goals, it's actually a lot of good engineering.
Anyone else? Questions and deliberations, or do we do the most study?
Yes, one of the questions, uh, it might be hundred ninety five thousand dollars. Um, I got one figure of time, uh, list the services. Would, if we approve that today, will that get us through getting D doc? Built and in place and done?
Yes. Well, that's, that, that he has to do the, the design. Get, get it out, get it built and see it through construction. That's what that covers. And when we're done that, he's included, uh, you said, total surveys, nearing final design. Which includes electrical engineering of these systems, and by the way, the electrical engineering include, let me get it full built out and try and decide. Pieces to actually serve the rest of the basics right now. Being in, coming here to review the bid, receive with you, make your invitation, and then going to start the process. There is seventy five thousand that is part of the structural administration. Uh, a big chunk of it needs to cover whole time inspection to, uh, water anyway. So that's, that's one of the biggest for construction administration part of it.
Okay, can you anticipate any? Contingencies that might occur that would, would necessitate a, a market comeback? With, with another bill you didn't expect?
I don't think so, you, you have, you have an existing doc and located, and there are a few docs, it'll, it's gonna that works. You know, again, for everything's like, and we're skywriting, uh, you know, that the kind of thing that we're trying to cover, but.
So I know, I understand the process and how we got here, essentially waiting for the. Permitting agencies to acknowledge the fact that they're going to allow us to continue to move forward with concept three before we need that financial commitment. Which I think was a lot irrational, the right thing to do, um, we got those answers and now we're here. I guess these questions are mine more so, when? What is, so if we move forward with this, with the anticipation, and just utilizing like your graph letter here. Let's go through that, I guess, um, so I'm thinking one oh four. And how, so this is the way that you're anticipating we'll be able to utilize this, the waterways grant has not approved this, has not said, yes, you can utilize. That money, but this is kind of what you're saying, potentially we could do this, and waterways commission has not acknowledged if we can not do that yet?
That's correct, we had about an hour long call at the DNR, um, we'll see you man, you're high, as well as. And this is the result that we'll discuss on that call.
And that was June seventh?
I don't remember the date of that one. Does it say in the summary here?
That yours is dated June twenty first.
I think you talked about her, two weeks before that, or something. But yeah, it's, it's how I think those bonds realistically could be used, and it does, you look at it, even the maximized. Grant approach, the first one that was done in there, Brad assumes that we're not gonna be able to use about a hundred fifteen of that. Of like a hundred fifteen thousand of the grant out because we're not building anything. Because the twelve hundred and that grant, I got a sense from the stocks that, that we wouldn't be able to get that.
Would not.
Would not be able to get that, so.
So here you say most of the scope components can be applied to light features, example, the twenty twenty one application name, peer instruction. Could be applied to the plan, new D doc main period, right? And do we know what that dollar amount is?
It's, uh, I don't think we have it listed by component in the grant. However, the way that I did this is I looked at the grant that was requested in the NR that year, and then I, I grabbed the amount that was actually awarded. And I took the percentage, why is the grant versus the total project cost? The grant would pay for twenty four points something per time. So I'd use that, a new process to say, you're gonna pay for twenty five percent of it. So that's how I got the max. Maybe not even need that whole detail, but, uh, I think, maybe it's, you got, um, when they see this approach, they suspect.
Have you experienced anything like this, or you're not like? This type of conversation with the waterways commission and other projects?
Not exactly like this, but there have been changes to projects, uh, one example is, you know, one of the projects. Got grants, so you didn't move forward right away. Now moving to the projects, you got bid back, and it was, that was just. And the electrical stuff, uh, because government costs right now is too extreme to die. So the, the states come back, and I believe you build a portion of that project. And use all the grant dollars, we know you can't go a whole project because of. Right, so, yes, they're, they're generally great to work with, just need to present what you're doing.
So with this concept, with us considering the right, basically bullshit from the beginning point of time. Uh, stay with me, say yes now, and then next week, you hear back, yeah, you can't utilize the funds, that's actually realistic dollar money to utilize. How quick do you see you, how quick or do you think you will be on your task outline? Maybe you have seven tasks left to there, you restart there? What do we expect, I mean, are you going to absorb and soak up, you know?
So you have one sixty six hundred, which time, that one? I think you start the, probably the two to four weeks. And I'm gonna start, you approve today, I'm gonna start to get that lined up, scheduled, and I expect that, you know. Pull your back, you know, pretty quickly. Maybe this smaller vacations go all the way.
Okay, and so are these, are you working from past one to seven independently, or can you be using doing past one, two, three? At the same time?
So that's forty seven thousand, another sixty four hundred, you know? And, you know, with, with the, the preliminary engineering, you know, if we hear back in the next two weeks, that, no, this isn't gonna order. We're not gonna incur our costs in that during time.
Yeah, uh, Mike, so. We don't, sure, sure as I don't find ourselves, and it's true that then we would. Um, in, in, in my mind, because we still don't, you, you may, there's a lot of assumptions, Dave, and I guess my confusion. Or maybe you can clarify, you know, on the grants, the whole reason that we, that we restarted this. Process, we're going back this way, uh. Uh, with the city manager, was that, you know, uh, so. You've always said, the discussion has been very positive, and indicated that, uh, to extend our revised project, a lot of the grants have. Previously approved, but no guarantees, and then in the next slide, it says that, you know, the, uh. There's no, no, no guarantee that the grant funds would be available for doc D. And then we go, and we move forward into your proposal, and. If you, if you've got the assumption that we're going to get this, and that's a big, that, that's a big thing that we've been. Hanging this weight on since, since last fall, and it was like, okay, we're gonna build out doc D, and, you, you know. And as far as the, the builder of doc D, I, compared to the numbers that we had, we already had that in place, but now lord knows. And, uh, uh. It, you know, what, in your, in your draft memorandum, June twenty first. You know, you go on to talk about how we're going to do this, and again, the new attenuator is included in. And, and, and we were pretty specific that, you know, we wanted to look at getting doc D done. Without the attenuator, because I was adding another million dollars on the cost.
The, the attenuator diner, okay, it's not part of the scope on either of them.
Okay, it says right here on number four, one oh four, that it is. Keep components for this, to get these grants. Those grants.
Both for the grant items, those are the components for the student grant application.
I got it, and then, and then you're trying to, uh, explain that backing out components. Part of the, part of that owner was gonna be in the twenty four, three percent. So I guess I, I'm asking for clarification, that we are working on rebuilding D doc. Which will be specifically addressed, but again, then on page one oh six. You know, you have the wave attenuator, uh, the, uh, the grant, you have the grand dollars. Pulled out for a hundred fourteen thousand dollars. So you're seeing, you know, the two grades, the one was for the electric, the land side electric. Which was in question six months ago, a lot of local units. Because you're not going out with the entire project, so with that being said, one of the main questions that I have is, when do we get the great dollars? Or, I mean, so is this the, is this the bait and switch, not from you, from the state, whatever, is this the bait and switch that? We're gonna give you this money, well, you have completed concept three. So you're not getting it done until concept three is done, is this continued by getting D doc done, concept three?
So it's gonna be the scope of the project, and the scope of the project is going to be presented, and the NR has been. These two options, this is almost given to them, they're gonna say, if you recognize, if you give any of these grand dollars. You're changing when you want to build, do what you want to build, or when you sent us, we approve, we're going to send you. This amount of grand dollars to build this stuff, which is D doc and a couple of other things. When that's built, there's no bait and switch at that point, is, is they've agreed, there's a grant agreement that gets signed both ways. Uh, and then effectively works on reverse, so the city makes the progress, or payment to the contractor. Shows us the state, the state reverses for their reporting of that. And that's, that's where we're at right now, that this game plan has been submitted to the DNR. We need to get their confirmation that that game plan is okay right now, and then our assumptions on twenty four percent. Of certain items is gonna be okay.
And so I'm, uh, so I'm clear, so your game plan is on page one oh six, number four. Concept three, phase one strategies.
Correct.
D doc, replacement of D doc, uh, new gangway, new utilities, which looks one through ten. New utilities on D doc, D doc fire protection.
Correct, that is the first option, the better, which pays advantage of the most grand dollars that there is.
Which is six hundred sixty nine thousand, leaves us with a local share of seven hundred and eighty thousand.
The other option presented there, uh, which we've complicated lower engineering, we need to put your hand right now. Um, tries to take the local shares below the cost of the project.
But we get the least amount of per bill. Do we get all of the doc D on concept three?
You do get that, that D. There you do this, the grand color on the table to prepare electric to inside walk, so one to ten, or three to ten. Those are the fixed docks here, uh, for the building. And then you're reducing to the expend feasible, the awful utility for the land side. And it'd be cheaper to do it sooner than later, true.
But what option B, you know, again, that, that talks into the way of.
Well, and so all the items I'm listing there are items that would not include the project.
Okay, there's no.
Yeah, I'll just for that.
Okay, uh, Mike. Though we talked a lot about location, uh. And, and what they're. Why is it that we have to use you as our engineering, and that's what the engineers, your questions on that?
Sure, so the document is need to go from concept and permit level to. So some of the detailed information. What kind of that, that's there, quotation requirements, interior requirements, the electrical design, art, protection design. And land side, land side design, uh, quotation banking to do. All design role on the actual doc they manufacture, it's a proprietary product. Uh, they're not gonna do electronic design. They would do the same thing that we're doing with the professional engineer, which I'm sure is not part of their, part of their deal. Um, you also, as a, as a function of the grand dollars, it's very basic, but I have to this out. So you can't have a document factory designed that is out. Uh, you know, potentially get the product, I don't think that would work. Well, development of all those detailed plans is what we need to be doing for you, and you need to be able to know that you've got a quality. Engineer designer working on this, designing this stuff properly, say the video code.
Uh, can you confirm the conversation that I had with Cody from floating dots, that if we utilize him, say we even did this out. And he was the winning bid, utilizing him, if it was a winning bid, we still would not be able to utilize grand dollars, because he was not an engineer. And you wouldn't have to, he, he, he told me that essentially you would not be able to secure grant funds for this.
Is that true? I believe that's true, I've never seen you want it done that way, um, and we didn't work on that. Just for general information, I had a similar conversation, uh, Mr. Carmichael had that to me, and totally based to the same thing. Independent of your conversation.
Uh, so I'm like one more clarification, so you, you just talked about, uh, in, in, in your response there. Uh, that if Mike's, our attempt question back to you, or comment about, uh, uh, rotation taxes. That they don't deal with any electrical, but you also alluded to the same thing yourself, that we don't have any, you know, electrical cost in here. We have a lot of costs in our portfolio, we'll give us how we said it, you're talking about it first, because I didn't know.
Yeah, we we have a good article, we have a, we have a medical engineering sub assault due to utilize. Uh, because it is a very, very, very specific item. I know enough about it, I can do the design. Build that specification, but we like to redefine this, make sure it's all involved in that.
Well, especially good word violation already, so we've got quite a can. Our grand Doc D is. When are you aware of other grants that are down the road and the city might potentially be eligible for? To in covering this project with fruition, not necessarily Doc D, just the overall arena project?
Sure. Uh, I would certainly recommend that, you know, while you're building basis of this project, you go back to waterway. Because you're you're likely to get funding for the next phase of this successful implementation of this base. Uh, we'll be good, um, the DNR market base to be those blank to. Funding community's first phase, and then when I say we're going to base two, say. Uh, usually they follow through very intense, follow through on additional bases. Uh. Another one, depending on how. The break of the desk, uh, you see a little transient. There's the federal voting infrastructure grant. That's one that's usually bringing us critically, especially if you know transient, um, slips. So that grant pays for a share of transient facilities, so for instance, if you're really D doc. And half of D doc was gonna be transient. Then that half would be eligible for the voting infrastructure grant. Uh, which has a pretty significant cost share, that's fifty or seventy five percent of the project. So, uh. And that is a federal grant that goes through the state. And so, uh, April first of twenty twenty four is the date that the waterways grant is due allocation. It's also the day that you submit federal application to the state. Them to review, they decided they wanna be a partner in applying September twenty four. For that federal grant. So there's, I would say those are the two primary opportunities.
Does does any of our shadow network of communities in this situation, which is how this is in this long term? How they deal with issue, could they look at it with sustainability?
Uh, it's very difficult, uh, I would say to the communities that. Kept up with, you know, placing docks every couple years, five years, ten years. Uh, are probably in a bad position. Uh, I can give you a list of some other communities that I've worked with. But everybody's facing the same issues, the range are various, but now particularly the electrical systems. Uh, materials are all expensive, everything is expensive. And the revenue that is generated seasonally is very straightforward, it just gets paid for that transient where it's tough, because. Your actions can vary again. The cost for transient wiring is in my opinion too low statewide. But, yeah, it's a, it's a common issue, you're not the only one who deals with it, and, uh. I know the person that you're on, has decided to balance any.
So these, the grant first, uh, renovating the program that. We we receive that for that specific reason, there's no string attached to whatever, we got a problem, we got a grant. And. Uh, we get that grant secured at the three hundred ninety two or whatever it is.
But I understand, yes. That granted, land shore improvements, including electric toll and water components as well, too, it wasn't all a hundred percent for electric. I wanna make sure that that's.
Plus three twenty seven. Three twenty seven, is that, uh, for the expansion, the, uh?
The three ninety two was the expansion of arena, the three twenty seven was the overall on the utility utilities.
Uh, my opinion, what happens, they may decide not to do this. You know, what happens if we have, you know, serious trouble?
In terms of pursuing the E doc, like, uh. Uh, your options should be to go back out, I know your engineers would would do it. Um. You would, you could get involved and just replace the electrical on D doc, or they could set themselves up. For more issues down the road, because eventually the documents get replaced.
Um, and we can't, we can't use whatever the rules may put in. Except that in landside.
But it it results in some, some costs when you're.
And and Mike, you have, uh, three hundred and some odd thousand dollars in arena, right?
Correct.
So we have two grants. And then the three hundred thousand say. The difference is up to maybe nine hundred thousand. Am I right?
I believe so, I'd have to go back through the budget presentation with regards to arena, because in that, we proposed. Using a significant portion of those funds, uh, for the. Their fund dance, as you, as much of their real resources have worked in both parts.
But we were gonna change it directly. And what's opposite, what I'm trying to think here, we have security grants and those grants, you know, this is soon. That we have three hundred and so thousand hours in progress. Give me a three hundred thousand hours in reserve on, that's nine hundred thousand. And then are we capable of borrowing? What water fund or the DEA, would they have, would be able? Fund reserves and set up a human structure, even at that, we've done things like that in the past, it's a very possible.
Here's I wanna sell my answer.
But it seems like what we really need to work on is financial projection, when, okay, we got, you know, what, what are they gonna, what revenue are we gonna generate? By re-revenue, what we have, and then what are we gonna be able to generate with the expansion? Seems to be a critical thing that, uh.
With regards to all the pass up D, I would say yes, with the phases and things of that nature, that was something that we talked about earlier, but. Put that on the back burner. Doing just the Doc D replacement isn't gonna generate any.
Yeah, right, yes, right.
The rules are just replacing one for one.
Get a boosted.
But we start with, yes, yes.
Well, those were my questions. Uh, any other, um. Discussion for the commission? Mike, is there anyone on, uh, or waiting for your name for a reason during? I'll double check while you're looking. There's only two participants, and no. When did you?
Well, I have a comment, I said the construction administration portion of our fee would come later, so if there's a short term. Issue, let's say through the end of this year. I think the construction administration is gonna come in the later time through this grant, so. While you're looking at our overall, most definitely the design stuff will come in this year. Most likely this fine fall. Let's see, it's gonna come later. So I need to make the point that it's gonna be spread over multiple years of the market, yeah.
And then, yeah, there's a many couple of comments received once the agenda was posted on, on, on.
Now that I can see, uh.
Okay, now it's working. Okay, well, um, commissioner, how do you like to proceed? Any other question? Did we entertain a motion?
I made a motion, city commission review and consider the June seventh, twenty twenty three proposal for consulting. Services for our, from our month and prove it for the estimated maximum fee of a hundred ninety eight. Thousand five hundred dollars subject to the provisions that if at any point the project becomes untenable. The city reserves right to work with our month to modify the agreement. Or failing that. Failing that terminated, paying our month or services rendered to that point.
Okay, is there anything, sorry? Where?
Well, I mean, it's, it's too, it's too vague, what, what are we talking about, are we talking about, again, page one oh six? The, the number four, concept. Three phase one, are we talking about A or are we talking about B? Uh, I I think that's a big aspect of this. And, you know. A, a fighting with, you know, Tim's, uh, motion. But I wanna know what we're doing. And, you you know, so there's no more, so there's no more water just. Flowing under the bridge, uh, to have this, with speed, but we, you know, we need to, we need to, we need to get this in place. It's, it's already, it's, and again, I I think this could have been done before. But, you know, it was always want to know, I may, I don't know, and now all of a sudden. Regularly, it's like, yeah, it should be fine, so. Uh, but I would add to Jim's motion that, you know, we're looking at, uh. Uh, a proposal maximize, uh. Uh, the grants, and, uh, that proposal is the one four five. Six hundred sixty nine, six hundred seventy thousand in grant share, and and now leaves a local share, seven hundred eighty thousand dollars.
I'm in favor of A. I mean, everything we're having, we're not gonna get the answer, and, uh. Well, that's why I'm telling you something, it is what it is, but I'm in favor of A. Because if you don't do it now, you're gonna do it down the road, and you're gonna pay more.
Amen. As well, that takes care of it, it's easy there.
No, can can we add that to the, oh, the motion?
Yeah, would be concept. Well, the financial structure of the grant would be a maximizing grant regardless of total share. And can I add, then just. A biweekly follow up, city administration, I know where we stand, because I don't want to go into a meeting, I'm off the act later. Oh, there's a letter around the end of, or the beginning of July, I don't answer. And what you did to the city administration figures against an answer response, I'd like your permission to have that as well, sure.
Okay, so. What I do is recruiting, or, uh, Tim has made a motion. Uh, the recommendation for the one hundred ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. And we're adding in for the maximized rate, or with the total share content, um, for A. Yes. Well, the concept three, we're gaining. Page one oh six, they're done. Hey, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I have. That makes sense to me as well, too. Obviously, it'll be subject of, as the commission damage check does mention. Uh, what we can work out with the state as well, too.
Any, are you okay with that, Joe, if you add it, I didn't say, any related. You have one on front street, road improvement, engineering services. Consider the recommendation, considering monitoring by the table, group, and teaching maybe. For the technical services for the front street, crush and shake project, and codes that is estimated to equal twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. Then when very, you know, continuously. Yeah, we just got the memo on here.
White to be part of what the mission department transportation calls rural task force M A. Which is made up of organizations that operate public transportation and infrastructure. The task force covers Antrim, Charlevoix, Emmett, and South Africa counties. Every several years, Boeing City becomes eligible to use some of the funds allocated, uh, in Charlevoix County. This is done on a rotation, rotating basis with other school agencies in the county, including, uh, their trainer. Uh, the fund that become available to us can only be used on approved streets that qualify and are part of. And are approved as part of the national functional system. Those streets approved to use these funds in one city, uh, are counted in the national map, it's included in the agenda package. Uh, the projects are approved and put on the schedule several years in advance. For our current funding cycle, uh, through this program, portions of the front street. Section is a little less than half a mile, and are shown in revenue between second and main street. Uh, on a separate attached map, our schedule to have their engagement improved through a process that's called, uh, crushing shape. Uh, these are the last sections of front streets being aimed over the last few years. Is the estimated cost to do this work is slightly less than two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Upward to hundred ninety six thousand, two hundred and six, we come from the state, leaving an estimated balance of just forty nine thousand dollars. Plus engineering and inspections for the city to pay for. The exact amount will be responsible or will be determined by, uh, bidding of the project. Uh, the state contribution is fixed and cannot be increased. Uh, because of the funding sources, this project have to go through N dot's bidding process and prepare to their requirements. This is similar to other earlier projects that have been done using these funds, such as the reconstruction of Division Street, uh, some years ago. Attached to the commission's consideration is a proposal from our consulting engineer, C two A E, to do the work necessary to get, uh. To get to bid and then oversee the resulting project. Their estimated cost will be forty thousand, five hundred dollars, as you know, on page three of their proposal. Funds for that project are available in our major street, in front street as a major street. Uh, Eric Brown from C two A E, uh, is here, uh. At the meeting, to address any questions that I may get, or ideas regarding this proposed project. Uh, my recommendation that the city commission review and consider the proposal from C two A E. And approve it, uh, for the professional services for the front street depression shape project as proposed. At an estimated total of forty thousand, five hundred dollars. I'd be glad to address any questions that you're missing.
Mike, what are the questions I had with the map that you referenced, all the streets that are eligible for this funding? Front street, with the vision. Or the streets that are eligible for this funding, where do you have that, man?
Yeah, I brought the map a little bit on the screen right now, it's all those ones that are in color, uh, so it's the green roads. Is there the round roads and also the yellow and white. Uh, the white one is M seventy five, which is the state bump line, uh, so we don't have any jurisdiction over that, so. Even though those ones are qualified for that road, uh, we don't have access to the road to do anything on. Uh. So, the little roads that you mentioned are part of it, but also, uh, North Lake Street. Uh, a good chunk of Lake Street is eligible for it as well, as is West Michigan and part of the, uh. One City Road heading toward Young State Park. Also part of the Wildwood Harbor, uh, Wildwood Harbor Road is available as well, too.
And West Michigan, that has been recently closed.
Correct.
In North Lake Street, it's not, part of North Lake Street.
Yes.
So the only stretch along the front street is that section there.
Those two sections that are in there, the section between the two red sections that are shown on the map are in good shape.
Eric, is there anything you'd like to add? C two A E?
Uh, not at this time, unless there's specific questions I have answered, okay.
Uh, any questions or comments from both?
Hi, I'm Cindy Richard, five three six, East Lincoln Street, um. Yes, my question is, number one, the lead crime, it's stated here that it needs to be done by, the submission needs to be done by September. It says September first, which is ninety's away, or is that September thirty eighth, or thirty, which is thirteen weeks away? Um, as Mike. More you mentioned, you know, preparing to many bids about a four week process. It had your initial meeting, which is the week, doesn't leave a lot of time, um, so I'm curious about. Which of those dates we're looking at, because the last city commission meeting will be, then whatever, the second Tuesday. Um. One thing, I keep bumping up against, I guess, and we got a prime and material estimate, um, so we're looking at a blended rate of about a hundred. Pops an hour on the construction and on your. I look at the, at March. Packages that was just approved, and if that goes. Packages that was just approved and if that goes on, there's seventy five thousand dollar contract administration fee. In there, um. My question, it keeps coming back to why it is we do not build an internal resource. In our staff that can do contract administration. Because that's what, it's, it's not a unique thing. It's a, it's a skill that's out there and it's been paid for itself. Contract administration, grant writing, uh and we got bid project coming up. You can outsource part of it, but who's the Boeing City lead that looks over it? Mister Kane, as his team manager, has a fifteen million dollar business to run and he can't be the one tied up doing all this. So I guess I've been, I've been concerned about timing again, not your fault, um. Why? This is, these are fundamentals in planning and running and operating a business, which happens to be the city of Hoey. I would have expected to see a project win even with the A by March, so. Maybe we need to start looking harder at a staff app. Of a contracts administration, grant writer, general person, because we be running into timing constraints. Thank you.
When you address that in those questions, um same with you.
I mean, some communities do have their own engineering departments uh that deal with this. Uh One City hasn't had an engineer for decades, as long as I know. Uh it seems like there might have been one way, way back, maybe in the sixties or something at that timeframe. This gives us the flexibility to add it, you know. Basically, take on projects or not, how having that overhead locked in. Uh a lot of this work uh normally falls under the jurisdiction of our director of public works. I was who, without that, a person in that position for quite some time, and we've had transition on that going on for the last couple of years. Uh hopefully, as things without Mister Barney will be able to uh assume more of this and I'll be able to. Move myself from this bunch of hands on as I have been doing just to keep things moving forward.
Okay, and then there was a question about the deadline. Is it December first, September thirty?
So this is the M D places projects we have followed in the M D. Uh scheduled letting schedules and uh meet specific milestone deadlines that they have for. Uh working through the process. Uh we had a preliminary meeting with M D, uh May thirty first regarding the funding for this project and the schedules. And uh they were willing to, I guess, work with us to adjust those uh. Timelines, the big uh milestone is the G I submittal. And they use the words September, um. The actual defined due date would be like, already passed. I think it was June twelve, so they were giving us some flexibility um with the scheduling, so. I would, uh again, that's what they just use September, we could have the G I, the whole drawings approved by September. Um so I would, you know, go for using September first. Uh just as the worst case scenario, but they didn't really define because it was just kind of a general discussion that they were willing to. You know, modify their normal learning process and schedule. To help Boeing City get this completed this one year term period. Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, we should just, um.
Yeah, uh. I mean, I'm in most part, I read through it, um. To me, it's kind of an over here. And on uh three hundred and sixty six hundred to the state. So, that's important.
Uh so. Uh that was gonna be a question, the, you know, the. Forty ninety, if we're only. Responsible for reporting that thousand dollars, what if that changes, just to your point, that the bits could change? And uh so what if then, what if as you're getting bids, that number changes and, and, and now the whole project is gonna be two hundred eighty thousand dollars? Now we gotta come up with eighty thousand dollars.
The city would be responsible for any cost overruns that come in during bidding. Uh we are not committing this project, just be home to have that bidding.
Again, my, my question, let me, let me restructure my question. So we're just, once we say go, we're locked in no matter what that number comes in. Can I start with that, please?
Sure.
I think, I think there is a, you know, for certain, a certain amount, uh if you can speak to this there. If bids come in, and honestly, it's like ten percent or something like that. That you kind of like what you just said, that we are locked into it. But if they came in like three hundred thousand dollars or something like that, uh we have the opportunity to rebid or to reject it, is my understanding. There's, it seems like there's a threshold in there.
I'd have to verify that, I'm sure.
Well, that also, that also brings into another, so, okay, if, uh. So you get your forty thousand dollars if you do this project.
Yeah, our services are for thinking the design, uh following the process, which is different than a local street's project. And, you know, typically do, and then construction services. Uh if it needed construction. That kind of speed would come into play, so, you know, if things went sideways during bidding and then go to construction. We would not uh give those construction services.
Okay. Uh and I agree with Tim, then, you know, uh cat face. Looks like no break, what did Tim's word? But nothing, nothing's ever great, no breaker. Uh and how about, uh, you know, what we didn't get, Mike, is, once again, he was just kind of throwing at us. Um, why, I have two questions on that, why, why wasn't this brought a month ago? Which you already had the facts of this, when we were talking about what we're doing with you. And on the other one, I was hoping that ended up at the last meeting, so A. Why that wasn't brought up at that time? B, I, I don't know, I don't know, we, we spent, you know, four hundred fifty thousand dollars. I don't know where this lease is on the uh, on the road budget. So we didn't get any supportive documents of that either, so. And so in my mind, it's not, it, it, it's, it's a little bit more than no breaker. The, the, the dollar benefit is no breaker, but we don't know where we're at. And, and, and we're committing to dollars on, on a renewed project that we've been discussing and re-discussing. So, you know, we're at, at some point in time, like you said, we're gonna have to start robbing Peter to pay for it, so.
Wasn't this part of our budget?
Yes. Seconds that we did, some of the major street funds, this would be out of the capital. I got it, that we talked about that. We, but we didn't, but we didn't say which ones, when, where, and now, and then, you know, we committed to quarter million dollars. And now, so, so now we're up to three the last couple of weeks. But there's nothing to support it, that's all I said.
And with regards to the timing of this, um we looked at the agenda for our last meeting and talked about it. The commission has requested that I try to balance the agenda I was on. Uh there wasn't any urgency that is uh real urgency with regard to happening that our last meeting or this meeting. So I'm gonna try and balance the agenda topic as much as possible with regards to it.
So, but I guess I don't understand why it's not noted, when we talked about redoing. The other, the other, at front street, and in, in the other thing. I understand why they, it's a no breaker.
Yeah, I support the recommendation, but just for clarification, so on your fees, there's a preliminary engineering deal without. And then the construction game, that where you're on site, the people are on site, insurance, kind of things that are right or correct. Uh if the project doesn't happen, would, you know, go south, we don't pay that sixteen thousand five hundred. But we still have all the engineering done, the stream went, times right.
Correct, maybe with, um, the design, you cover all of the requirements to do a M D local aid project, which is. Uh pretty extensive, um including uh program education, environmental certification, sort of reviews. Uh G I, plan development, process comments, uh H M A education, that means, um. They, they, they're quite a practice to do an M D project, so that would all be done during the design phase. And then, you know, uh, things went sideways during the day. You would have all the design, the plan, and the quantities, the cost, everything, uh completely fine.
Yeah, I'm supporting regulation, so.
Great, well, the city commission reviewing, so the proposal from C two A E and approve their proposal. Professional services for the front street, crush and shape project as proposed. An estimated total of five to the city of forty thousand five hundred dollars.
And then, and then there was a second. Uh second that. Um any further discussion, revision? Jessica, what call please?
Lassiter.
Hi.
Nettech.
Hi.
Franklin.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
What's your hearing?
Okay, thank you, thank you. We do, Eric. Okay, we'll be now, yeah, the original model formulation change. They have.
Again, the city commission reviewing considerations, change order decree for the pump station. Uh change order for forming items that describe the cover letter and detailed supporting document. Uh provided by C two A E and the contractors. Uh the four items are, uh actually utility connection costs for both the electric and the gas system for that building. Provision of required third pump wheel line, the. We had the third pump, but it, uh, on the old system, it did not have a relation necessary. Uh to do, that we moved over. Uh fan control output card and labor materials. And then the uh wiring changes to, to, it goes able to uh provide generator power for the traffic signal. At the water and lake stream intersection. Uh the total cost for these four changes are twelve thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. Bringing the total project contract amount to five hundred and seventy seven uh thousand one hundred and sixty nine dollars. Uh with these changes, uh today, uh including this, uh the project is uh thirty thousand one hundred and sixty nine dollars. For its original contract amount, there are efficient funds available, the wastewater fund to handle these additional expenses. Uh the changes are recommended by our consulting engineer, Eric Brown, for C two A E. Again, is uh here, uh regarding to answer any question the commission might have on this. Uh it's my recommendation that the city commission review and approve change order number three. For the brick metal pump station improvement project in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Uh bringing the total project to five hundred and seventy seven thousand one hundred and sixty nine dollars.
Okay. Here, you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh nothing additional, I can answer any question, please.
Does this address a logging issue at all, or is that a separate issue? That's a separate issue that I'm still working on, I should come back and for the city commission supply.
And then you have any questions from the phone?
I guess you just asked me, so. Sandy Richard, five three six, East Lincoln Street, I understand, based on the clarification, you report additional things to help optimize our group. Pump station, we're gonna work, but I, I, you know, when we're gonna get. The understanding or clarification of the analysis of the clogging problem, the pump problem, and not the shed going to be bought. You have a. Better amendment to that, with some instruction about any impeller being worked at that time. Um so, I mean, that, that may be one of the thoughts, I'm. Well, it's clogging, whether it's clogging or whether it's capation, so I will look forward to. I think a more upcoming date by which we'll hear about whether the function as exact or intended for.
When do you, you have a question?
Uh yes, uh the uh replacement and test impeller and components have been uh. Received and installed, uh we're evaluating uh the how. What type of improvements, if any, we're getting out of that. Uh we wanted to give it to the time to be able to operate, uh so we could uh. Judge, uh they made a long-term recommendation to the city commission. We're not quite at that point yet, I would assume probably within the next two city commission meetings, we'll be able to get that back. Uh Doug and I are gonna have some additional conversation, then be involved in additional discussions with the engineers as well, uh too.
Anyone else? Hey? Morning, sir.
Yeah, well, you, you asked me, so we got a little bit of that answer, but I guess I'd like to know, you know, how much. Uh, you know, the contractor is gonna take blame for, you know, five hundred seventy seven thousand dollars worth of. Uh services being rendered and, and uh we're, we're no further ahead of when we started. Uh so, uh but other than that, I don't have a problem with uh the, the check off list here, yes.
Were these, were these four items not anticipated in the original contract, or the?
Correct.
Then why, why would they anticipate, it almost seemed like they would, they assumed they would be logical things. Could maybe be done with the project.
Okay, so the, um. The electric service and gas service was, uh the contractor structured, included allowance of five thousand dollars. I'm not sure how much, though, the lease services are gonna cost, we get the actual bill from consumers of P T E. So we put in allowance and, and then. In the paperwork, you see what the after, start this order from both of those, it's not over the allowance enough. So that one is pretty straightforward in terms of, you know, we estimate we're doing allowance, what we think that order's gonna cost. And the city pays the actual cost of that, so that's the difference for the first one. Um. The replacement of the relay for pump one, um those pump relays, uh. Their pumps are built with a, a heat detector and a temperature switch and a pump motor. So those relays are part of the upgraded communication control system. Um that will basically trigger a warning and alarm when the pumps are operating. Um that too high the temperature is weak, so. This whole setup of this pump station was mimicking the existing pump number three, uh which was previously installed. One of the huge parts of the project was electrical upgrade and controls upgrade to switch the whole pump station to four eighty volt, three phase power. And a new status system and all the control, the existing pump three did not have a right. Um relay switch on it to function with the new control system, so. The two new pumps came with that relay and that's just, they brought pump number three online first. They took the relay from the new pump, swapped, or swapped it out on the existing pump so that pump could communicate with the new control system. Meaning we had purchase of, of the additional one, uh. For the new pump, we had a, a route here to pay for, uh for that issue, um. And that was just, uh, I would say. You know, the unforeseen condition, um where. And we didn't have it in the bids, cause, you know, we thought that, that because it was the same pump, um. That the relay that was there would work, but it didn't work, so it would require the operations. The, um. The output card of the fan control, uh the fans that were specified are not the conventional two-speed fans. That would be, you know, high and low switch, they had. One, you might need to give it more variable control of fan operation, so. Because of those fan types, we had to add an analog card to the control panel in the, um. In the pump house, so that they could communicate with that, uh especially a higher end fan, a higher end fan, uh that's. In the pump house that they could communicate with that, uh it's basically a higher end fan, a higher end man, uh the central two speed. Uh high levels, right? That again, uh we did not include in the original bid package and was added to the project. Um. The main street lighting and street lights, uh again, that we had that in the project, but the existing conditions. And the drawings that we were based on information of. What was done in the field was not. What was done on the plan, so there was some active work just because of the field conditions. And all the wiring that needed done to get the streetlights and the traffic signals on the backup generators that they would work. Power was out, um there was additional work required because what the contractor found, they got into the panel. Um was different than what. This is the original design, no matter that it's built back in the day, uh where that contract was. Did, you know, a lot of plans, so there was some, you know, additional work in order to. To get that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh. It needs to be done, otherwise all the money is spent on, that was wasted at this point in time, so. Um I mean, it is what it is. Uh the burning grid is still there. Yeah, it's for the needs to be supported.
Okay, I support the recommendation as well, so I'm gonna continue the motion.
Make a motion that the city commission review and approve change order number three for the river metal pump station improvements project in the amount twelve thousand two hundred and nineteen, bringing the project total cost to five hundred and seventy seven thousand one hundred and sixty nine dollars.
Is there a second or? Morning, yeah, uh is that, is that any further comments or questions? Jessica, will call please?
Natchitochi.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Lassiter.
Hi.
What's your care?
Just quick question, was there ever a contingency presentable there?
Uh I have to go back and check, typically, we do carry a like or on a bidding. And percentage. And he's eight month.
C two A, there is eighteen percent of theirs.
Uh I guess you should clarify that, because we have literally like one number, you have a different number, so it was pretty clear by that.
I definitely, I'm on here, but uh right, I don't expect any use.
Okay. Anything else to do?
No.
Um moving on, if I didn't the airport, I'm sure instead of the recommendation of the airport advisory board, the purchase two recliners for airport terminal. And refurbishment of the past, yeah, it was the two thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars.
When? Yes, over the uh last year plus, the airport advisory board is working on updating the airport. Those that make more useful for people using the airport. For the past several months, the board has been working with bar lane and possible furnishes uh for the airport part of the terminal. This lane is the traffic coordinator for northern home, which is the the west third of the terminal on the city. This lane has volunteered compass hours helping to improve the terminal and across to the city. Regularly at airports like ours, pilots rest in the terminal between flights, sometimes catches sleep. The terminal has some furniture uncomfortably accessible such as this. This lane research possible furniture that can be used by pilots and others uh getting some rest or simply while waiting for flights. At their meeting, the board reviewed the options she presented in the event and approved the following motion. Uh which is made by myself, signed by group acre and asked unanimously with the consensus of the executive members present to recommend to the city commission. Uh that they operate bar lane and northern homes to work out the details of the purchase of two large flex deal reclining chairs uh for the airport terminal. Uh this lane, uh lane did grow out with a running hallway uh from the airport board who's here with us today. And those details, and those are the details I received before you. Attaches is is information on your being recommended type of work uh and the full uh the refurbishment of the tasky for them. The costs for two refiners, including delivery, get a total of two thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh there are funds available near for for financial coverage. In recent years, the airport went and went and went ahead and self supporting relying on weapons generated apparently fuel sales, danger events, and the annual regulars. Uh a recommendation is that the city commission review and consider the recommendation of the airport advisory board to produce the two refiners for the airport terminal for reading furniture. The tasky at a cost of two thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. And I'm sure Mr. Corrigan, if you have any interesting questions, the commission might have on that.
Roger, anything beyond that, I'll say for sort of all. Any counter questions? Mission. Steve. George.
Why don't we be authorizing bar lane for northern homes to do this? She volunteered to help out with this, and she has her expertise, and she's frequently buying furnishings and things like that for uh northern homes for their developments. Uh so we look to somebody that has some expertise, uh she'd been helping for quite a bit with other uh projects associated with renovation. If you've been in the airport generally, you've seen that uh the whole interior is in the paintage, you know, quite a bit of that. Uh they also glad their expertise in helping. Or come up with concepts for breaking the space up in from one big meeting room into uh three usable rooms. Uh one pretty much the main area where it used to share to be, then there's a conference room, and then there's a an airport office, which is. Kind of more standard than at C and O areas. So uh she's got a great track record of helping us out and with her expertise on this, and so she's not getting paid anything for it, but it's all off there.
Does the commission historically allowed an individual, uh not a property or different company within the city to be authorized? The city financial funds, historically.
She hasn't done anything with city financial funds.
No, I'm not, I'm the supervisor, she go spend twenty six hundred dollars, right? That's the, I mean, I don't, I would, we're perishing that would authorize you, that's my answer. That was my answer, we're not property organization, go purchase furniture on behalf of the city, I don't understand.
No, and that wasn't the intent, I'm sorry, but it came across as the recommendation was just to have a commission approve the purchase from refurbishment based on her information that she provided for.
Yeah.
He doesn't need to do it at all.
Gotcha.
All right. Anything else?
Uh yeah. Yeah, to your likes, you know, kind of, so she she was very helpful to him and uh helped the airport advisory board. Uh come up with ideas and everything and uh uh if if you add to it, I mean, you go over there, uh it's much more useful. And uh uh I think the improvements, I I think the advisory board's done a good job of trying to uh make improvements in that, uh you know, that. Um overspend uh on things I've done there, and uh. You know, it. The recommendation is kind of, you advise, I don't know, for her, she was just one that was helping find the, find the items, which is uh. Which there was all the way through that process, a different things in there, so. Somebody had to do the research, she did the research.
Yeah, I understand that, the only, it's just very clear, you're in that consensus, member to recommend the city commission authorized bar lane from northern homes to work up. That's where I'm over there, so it's a terminology thing, it's a terminology thing, I'm not taking discrediting bar lane or her commitment to the airport or anything, but. I just feel uncomfortable with the recommendation that the city commission authorized bar lane northern homes to work up the details for the purchase of two large chairs. For like twenty six hundred dollars.
I get what you're saying, uh I would, I was more referencing the uh. Our agenda, so I I get it. But so I think the recommendation would be that, you know, the.
City administration.
City administration with the airport board.
Yeah, that's important recommendation, I guess the question I have is, uh this is two thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. Well, does it mean, it's like that, do you have a commission for a pool? I mean.
Yes.
Good. All right. Okay, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion, the city commission. Reviewing since the recommendation of the airport advisory board. To allow city administration to purchase two refiners for the airport terminal for free and furniture for tasky at a cost of twenty six hundred, two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Morning, yeah, that's important, okay? Any further discussion, Jessica, will call please?
I'm fine. Moody.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
What's your care?
And if you can, I didn't hear it, it's a trouble, I can't hear it, they're like. That are directed, it's the fire chief, Dan Spinesberry, to approve a contract from C S I American State Apparates LLC for a month. Four thousand seven hundred and forty eight dollars in authorized three million, that's due to unnecessary damage.
As mayor, uh as member, uh states, uh we have two uh halogen seam lanes on our pocket truck. One of those, there's going to be bad, so this time we don't bring good time to upgrade to do that with a leg. With a stop, more visibility, more user friendly, there are more uh. Efficient operator. I've got a price from the other guy, and we're bringing the all the service on our trucks. To replace the two light of labor. Forty seven hundred and forty eight thousand. These light can give us quite a big impact and and the heat moves on small and plain, and plain of the scene, we want to create people. First, we all there soon. So our recommendations is to uh, and see as I, two lights are aerial drop. Probably forty seven, yeah. Anyway. A normal plane, she does, like in a rotation, or you do it every year, two years, or how many, like, they have a go out, they're a player, they. They don't work there. We need to um monthly check some of our trucks. Uh the aerial drop will be twenty years old next year. And they're just having lights all assume that they are built out, we're very unfortunate. New L E Ds, turn on like that. So at this time, it's still, we are in the process of replacing all our lights down, our glass, everything. There's just more efficient operator there. Just make a question to do that.
Yeah, I remember the like version of the conversations that I think, um. So, and the question is, is this forty seven, forty eight, or that, what did you? Yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, uh, the, the, usually technically, well, expensive, maybe.
Yeah.
Uh, one question, this might say to replace the batteries, will it, will the L E Ds be allowed to charge in a battery too? I know they are electricity wise, I don't know how.
Yes, um how long do we have to run off generator or anything with a new L E D? Have you got a, this is a lot more efficient.
Okay. Jordan, yeah, good to. For your recommendation, appreciate along you and. Thank you. Why don't you make a motion?
Did you report a public?
Going to that. Sorry.
They're out of the boat, that's to bet.
Uh. I'll make a motion that. Uh we approve the recommendation for going to city fire department to utilize C F E emergency apparatus LLC services as their leader. For a cost that you receive four thousand seven hundred and forty eight dollars.
If you're second. Gordon, okay, maybe in the discussion. Jessica, will call please?
Moody.
Hi.
Lassiter.
Hi.
Natchitochi.
Hi.
What's your care?
Okay, moving on to by the math, Brandon is correct identification contract. With the recognition from planning director Scott and Pearson, we approve the proposal from Brandon is for one year contract for short and red identity certification certificate. For twelve point seven thousand seventy dollars and sixty three cents. Done, man. Um in July twenty one, the city commission approved a one year contract for an interest to provide to a terminal address identification service. This contract will renew another one year period and collect the physical costs and six thousand seven hundred and forty dollars expense. This contract expires on line thirteen point three. In October twenty two, the city approved the contract grant just to provide clients monitoring services in addition to the identification. The service will add to the existing contract on a weighted basis for remaining contract term and cost of two dollars and forty nine. Uh the address identification service and see if necessary to over the start of the whole administration of the short term license ordinance. Uh proposal from Brandon is for a one year contract based on two hundred and twenty one listed for prices seven thousand seventy dollar fifty three cents, which is thirty two dollars. And two cents for less than. Uh this is an increase to the dollar fifty three listing, which is a total increase, we are thirty eight dollars, thirteen seven. While, I was, I'm always a useful and initial application of the organs, the value is for the set of diminished down that all. All the active short term rentals have updated ones. But the big value of that service, those valings, and they did like two hundred and fifty valings of. Application orders, uh uh identification papers out there, not all, so it's like a ninety page letter. And then they did a follow up conference. That basically worked it out. Um the annual. Cost of that service uh would be four thousand fifty dollars if it says, if the city commission told. Um the commission may recall that prior to entering in first contract grass, it pulled from other companies that needed the. Ten thousand dollars per year for two year minimum, when they developed far. Uh and past, we've been city staff has got, was got injected by a new company that offered this service. Uh like they provided demonstration and a request to call, which I have not received. Uh they did identify sets of uh one. Uh other, for this value that uses them in North Michigan, they're just trying to get into the state right now. And I did talk with that person uh a couple days ago. And they indicated that they were under contract at twenty six dollars. They have more service that would anticipate their service. So, uh if you get, you know, call from them, and it is competitive, um. You know, they would take fourteen to sixteen weeks to establish the platform and go to service, so, you know, if you want to go with that. Have to wait till that time start, and I will not want to have a period of service, I think, if it's competitive. Now, we'll anticipate prior to this contract expire coming forward. Yeah, so. Um. With that, um it's my recommendation to move forward with the grass is contrast, the contract, it is competitive. Price, the one I see, and you know, uh they gave us uh two hundred and fifty one listings. They had checked, we had two hundred and ninety, so we just kind of carried that over from last year, I'll be just. See, like, they're they're trying to. So I would recommend before that, I'll contract with price of seven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Um. A bunch of those haven't allocated in there, by a company that created. Hundred and ninety one listings, yeah, what what did I read then?
Well, they basically done a number of listings, and listings, one rental can have four, five listings, you know, everything's like. So that's just, you know, so we have about a hundred and seventy accurate amounts, but we got two hundred and ninety listings to get a lot of. That's all.
The point is you're kind of.
Sure, uh I'm I'm fine with it, I mean, Scott did a good job on this, and uh. Um, nothing changed a whole lot for our work, you know, uh this is a, this is part of what we talked a lot about in the short term, rental aspect and uh. Rental last back and it's just a cost to do a business for, for, but it's also why we tried to. Uh.
Thank you, Jordan.
I'm in. Uh, yes, no, we're gonna need it. For our STRs, the only concern I have is if we're not doing the additional four thousand dollar service, are we going to get to the point where we have too much? That we're bringing in within these area, you're not concerned about that view of the structure there after two years.
So we can look at that, um. You know, right now, I think we're right in the ballpark, what we estimated, what we come in and the time that we take. Um, so I, I don't see that.
Okay. Yeah, I have this for recommendations, we're wanting to. I'm making a motion that our city commission approved the proposal to grant this for one year kind of short term rental app. You have identification service for a total amount of seven thousand seventy eight dollars and sixty three cents.
If you can say.
Right. Which is for.
Last girl.
Hi.
Don't worry.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Yeah, the fighter G, David Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most years, uh, of course, there are contracts for payment markets. Uh, services for the city department, I'm quite fast here, been around the streets, um, which would save people more of a pedestrian, giving us rates. Total value for the most recent contract in twenty twenty one was not to exceed thirty six thousand dollars based on a detailed unit in price or or main. Mainline road strip and the web district partners faces dot bars across lots analysis. My request for quotes, for quotes have been made by myself, but only one as trend has continued, only one quote was received as summarized below and included in the packet. M and M paper markings, uh, they have provided services going safe and then bad for several years or is out of that there no longer in operation. The best for now, PK is providing a service for our woodings in this area, largest state department company in the state of Michigan, a compliment to local specifications and it will be time. And based on this conversation with, uh, PK. They would have our son and I worked on by mid-July and the remaining work across lots and other areas, nothing couple of weeks back. And such our recommended city commission award a contract, a contracting for the twenty twenty three payment market services. This work was charged to the maintenance accounts of both streets, twenty five seven and major streets, seventy nine seven and the government are there as well. There are sufficient funds in both these accounts to cover the expense. I'm here to help and it's very good.
Great, good time.
Go, Rob.
Um, I'm down to.
There is a.
Open one, anything question?
Yeah, if you worked at the, this PK contract and reported.
I personally don't have experience. Uh, but I know, I know the work. They're pretty big office, so.
Yeah.
I've called, talked to their agency, brought in.
Yeah. Wouldn't he reach out for what, what was the reason? I mean, is it typical, do you don't get a response back from one? I mean, is it just a busy time of the year and they skip all the headlines?
Um, I would say it's just, uh, the way the nature of these, it's actually one company that I contacted and I thought it was a good quote, got to be on the road and. They kind of backed away, so. They actually kind of run a PK contract because they don't want to do some guy over the paintbrush and line trying to figure out what's out of town. Or maybe the job is too big, even though they were a large enough firm that they did the, uh, historic tire car network and their fantastic job, that's why you're so happy. So there's, uh, something we wrote, something we don't, PK contract. So that's.
One other thing we've noticed last couple of years, it seems like there's a big consolidation in the industry because there just aren't that many people from firms that are out doing this work. And the loss of the firm that we had used previously for a number of years, we're getting two or three bids. Um, and PK would already be a little bit higher. But there were these other firms that would keep their prices down, but a lot of those firms are no longer available. And. And, um, just the time that Doug spent trying to find other firms to get us a digital quotation, we just weren't finding it. That's why I think. PK is pretty much the main theme that's available out there. The other firm that Doug did find, as he kind of alluded to, really when you start getting into the details of it, didn't have. Didn't seem like they were fully prepared to do all the work that we needed to have done, even if they did want to, and then they ended up not giving us. So if right now it looks like at least in this area, it's PK or pretty much somebody else needs to start another company.
Okay.
And I support it.
Okay.
Uh, no, that's okay. I mean, I, I get it, you know, there's not a lot of options. I, I guess I would, uh, just ask Doug to get your eyes, ears open then. Moving forward, you know, a couple of years, you're gonna be doing again, you know, I, I don't want to be, you know, hell there. That was it, you know, I've not you, you can say that. Just in gen- in general, here's your only option. It's gotta be some, some. About a police car, it wasn't around here. It's all alive, all Pennsylvania.
You don't need to know.
You did, okay.
Um, Doug, how often do we do this? What's the cycle? Every other year?
I would say it's probably every other year, every four years.
Every year.
It is every year. So just in the first year, this last season, uh, that we kind of let it slide this year, you know, how it will hold out. Because sometimes we do it every year, it always looks like, do you really need to do it? And but by not doing it last year, you can see kind of what the condition is now. And we've always kind of struggled, uh, with regards to how soon in the season we do it. We tried to really move it up earlier because. Having it done in July or whatever, I'm timing, but. Hasn't always worked out well, it's, it only seems late this season. But it's really a temperature and weather dependent issue as to, you know, when spring comes. Now, we knew that this spring was going to be as hot as it was because, uh, we had, we had those discussions with our old contractor. When we tried to bring him in early, he said, no, you brought me in too early, the rope's weren't working out that, uh, you know, it'd be nice and warmer in the day, but the cold time overnight temperature would not allow me the need to set properly. So, but going back to your original question, this is something that we pretty much do every year. And this is the first time along that we've collected go, there was a guilty year and you kind of see that just how big the things are this time than this spring.
But there may benefit Doug, the area communities that are currently used as PK's, knowing business in town and came together and got it all in at the same time as that. Realistic commission.
And I think it probably is, I definitely would like to reach out and find out, I don't want to answer out for some of that, but I think so, yes. Either you're a chariot boy and you sort of.
Somebody just recently did the task too and just. Fresh and I just. I think it's important for us to get it done before. The time of year.
July.
Yeah, a lot of people are coming and we're not putting our best, but forward even though it's a pain on pretty. Okay. Um, that's all I have. I support the recommendation.
I mean, watching that the city commission order for disorder contract, he. Get contracted deep for the twenty twenty three payment market services and amount not to exceed forty two thousand two hundred and six dollars, forty seven, fifty eight cents. Further recommend city manager executing documents.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessica will call please.
No chat.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Last girl.
Hi.
Well, she cares.
Moving on, the revision place making two point oh grant opportunity.
Oh, we discussed it at our last meeting about the possibility of applying for, uh. This grant opportunity, uh, this is the second or third free opportunity to the state to ask for this, uh, what they're calling their wrap, uh, program. And goes to the mission economic development program. Um, we expect that there'll be a third round later this year. And included in the agenda packet, uh, uh, I'm with various programs guideline. It is a very short timeframe that we have left, um, to do it at the end of this week, if we did notice of it, anything. I have reached out to, uh, the MEDC as to whether our improvements on to our arena would potentially land. Uh, funding, but they have not responded at this point. I also reached out to the lots on Lake Street, uh, to see if this could possibly help them close the gap on their project. Uh, they indicated that they're looking at other funding options, uh. That they would need to have colesse together with possibly a future grant cycle when they were ready to move forward at this time. Uh, they've mentioned, um, we're working on other suggestions, uh, either now or later. At this point, it's pretty, unless it's something we almost pretty much have. Some concepts or something fairly developed on, I think it'd be pretty difficult to do something by the end of this week, uh, so. So my recommendation, if you're actually, whether you want to try and buy for something or take a little look at it in the next cycle, so.
But check second. Uh, I don't know if we have a specific date, I anticipate it'll be this fall.
Well. This is great, outside the.
There isn't a downside, um. So finding a project to apply for and see if we have the same time we put it together. Be doing now, right?
With the, the theater being, uh.
I don't think we have enough background materials, uh, to proceed with the theater. The theater would be a viable project for this, but if you need something further with regards to a scope of a project, I think it's anything for that. We have some ballpark estimates that we've done a few years ago, but nothing specific.
Um, I mean, certainly having to be approached like this with a grant opportunity. Um, instead of a deadline for tomorrow. Our strategy will be done a year ago, um, we don't have a project in mind. So, I mean, yeah, and, and, and I think obviously the city administration should find a project to utilize this and apply for. If it's awarded, great, uh, if you come back to the commission and see if you want to continue to move forward with it. I mean, if MEDC hasn't responded on a arena, then arena is the only thing that pops to my mind. I don't know that any of workings. For the departments, the administration, I don't know what opportunity to be best utilized this, I'm not aware of. So maybe fill out that patient process if you're able to, get submitted for the arena. Or if you don't have the time or the resources to do that, then we don't have the time and resources to do it. So you kind of leave that. Set that expectation, of course. If you think you can fill out an application for the arena, you're quite. If not, then.
I don't just want to probably be between Scott and I and Ryan with something together with regard to, uh, obviously. Change the planners and things of that nature and also executive assistants, but we've lost a, a large part of our grant applying team that we've had in the past years. Uh, so this will be something that. Scott, I couldn't check out, I mean, if the commission want to authorize us to buy her grant. Uh, you know, using our best judgment or something of that nature for the, uh, for the, the arena event, looking at the viable project. We do have some background data on that and obviously we've got, uh, having a person could help put something together quickly. But again, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves with regards to what we mean as well either, and that may be something we'd rather have some further discussions on. At, at a ball meeting.
Well, it says here, element lab in starting individuals and entities working to rehabilitate vacant, underutilized, collided and historical structures and the development of permanent place based infrastructure associated with traditional downtowns, solar zones, outdoor dining. And place based public spaces, these elements may include an hour or two. Anything you know about, I mean.
One thing that kind of media, we have the open space. If, uh, a lot of that was done, we improved the overall concept. So social zone. But a focus base. Yeah. I mean, that's the one that comes flying behind the lens, lost on ways with the corporate plan. Certainly, and, um, and Moody.
The open space, we can play happy, I had that in. We do have some background on that, we have future basis, the media is driven, there seems to be some community support for that. And then we could also bring in the resources, I think we can reach out and back into radio and see if they have something to help us.
Yeah, with the restaurants at, uh, Old City Park, hasn't that been a conversation parts director twice a month?
It hasn't been lately since these residents have been improved, um. But, yeah. Very long, long, absolutely long. From the back. Again, it was, it hurt to be one of them, but getting all their work together will be. There. I'm just thinking with the old, we've done it all.
That's true. Yeah. Yeah.
But yeah, these ideas that are being tossed out now, I mean, I think I, I, we use these for the potential starting base for the follow up when we get.
Is that enough to recommend for you, Lynn?
I, I feel much more comfortable with the commission made a motion, authorized enough that, uh, some point the state may say they need some type of a resolution or something of that nature that required, oh. In my head of a vote on record, uh, that would give Jessica and I something to work with.
I will make a motion that city commission directs city administration to find an opportunity within this cycle and next cycle to utilize grant funding. Or do you need specifics?
No.
Uh, you think so? Will it work?
Okay, do you have a second? Doug. Any further discussion?
I don't.
Fine.
Moody.
Bye.
Last girl.
Bye. Bye.
Okay, moving on, you have a closed session, consider the request. City manager Michael K, going to close session, discussion of collective bargaining strategy and provided an NCL file during due through. A of the ship over meetings act. Uh, but before we then, we have good in the order. Um, I, uh, have suggested commissioners, uh, a follow up to the city managers, the evaluation of the letter. Uh, there's no one here right at the moment. Uh, I'm wondering, you object to having this be invited on your full distance for our next meeting, or we could be here in public and not. And if you're not. But then they go through the court.
Yeah. Thought I heard, we did it in the beginning, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
So is that final?
Oh, that's mine, yeah.
Or this is.
Yeah.
That only we can, he might seriously done.
Four people out, it's basically.
All right, uh. I'm entertaining.
Making more than a drop of those that.
We're saying. Will call please.
Moody.
Bye. Bye.